Chapter two of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations concerning GWA's Fats, Oil, Oils and Grease or Fog Program. Today's date is Monday, November seventeen, twenty twenty-five, and the time is now ten oh two AM, and I am officially calling this a public hearing to order. Okay, for the record. For the record, we are conducting this hearing in person at GWA's main offices in Fadien Mangilau on the third floor in the CCU's boardroom. This public hearing is also being livestreamed, and we are online on the CCU YouTube channel. A recording of this meeting will be available for public view after the hearing has concluded, and it will be available again on the CCU's YouTube channel. As some housekeeping matters and in compliance with the public hearing procedures under the Administrative Adjudication Act and Guam's open government law, a public notice for this hearing was made available and published. The first notice for this public hearing was published electronically in the Guam Daily Post and Pacific Daily News on October thirty-first, and was also published in the print edition of the Guam Daily Post on October thirty-first. The notice was amended and re-announced on November eighth, twenty twenty-five, and again, it was re-amended, it was amended and published electronically again in the Guam Daily Post and the PDN on November eighth, and was published again in the print edition of the Guam Daily Post on November eighth. The amendment simply provided more detail to inform the public that the hearing was going to be livestreamed, and a recording would be available online. The second notice was published electronically again in the Guam Daily Post and in the PDN, and was also published in the print edition in the Guam Daily Post on November fifteen, twenty twenty-five. A notice of this public hearing was also posted to GovGuam's Public Notice Portal, and I believe was also published to our GWA Facebook page. Aside from the notices to the general public, prior to this hearing, GWA also sent approximately six hundred emails to high-volume grease or fog-producing stakeholders, which included food service establishments and fog haulers on record, and we reached out to these groups to ensure that they are informed, aware, and given the opportunity to participate in today's public hearing. And concurrently with the publication of the notices for this hearing, copies of the rules along with the preliminary cost impact statement became available for pickup at the same time the first notice was published, and they were available for pickup or for view online on October thirty-first, and they were available for pickup or public view in the first-floor lobby with our customer service department, and they were available online at guamwaterworks.org on our webpage. At this time, I would like to recognize members of GWA's Compliance and Safety Team who take the lead in administering our Fats, Oil and Grease Program. Online and with us virtually is Assistant General Manager of Compliance and Safety, Mr. Paul Kemp.
Good morning.
Thank you, Paul. And here in the boardroom, we also have Ms. Evangeline or Vanji Luhon, GWA's Senior Regulatory Analyst.
Good morning.
I'd also like to recognize Mr. Vincent Leguania, Management Analyst Four, who presently oversees and manages GWA's Fats, Oil and Grease Program.
Good morning.
And Ms. Melissa Scheibl, also with the Compliance and Safety Team, and Melissa Scheibl is GWA's Source Control Manager. We also have in the boardroom members of our operations team. I'd like to recognize Mr. Daniel Ugin, O&amp;M Manager for Wastewater Treatment. Mr. Jason Tadella, O&amp;M Manager for Wastewater Collection. And Mr. Ignacio Regis, Wastewater Treatment Leader for GWA. And we also have a member of executive management with us today. We have GWA's Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Taling Taitino. Okay, so the agenda for today's hearing, aside from the public testimony, we will be giving some opening remarks, and we'll have a presentation on the proposed rules. And the members of GWA's Compliance and Safety Team will give those remarks and a presentation of the proposed rules, and then we will move on to public testimony, and then I'll provide just an overview of the role-making process, and then from there we can adjourn. Okay. So at this time, for opening remarks on GWA's Fats, Oil and Grease Program, I'd like to turn over the hearing to GWA's Assistant General Manager of Compliance and Safety, Mr. Paul Kemp. Paul, you're recognized.
Thank you. Got it.
Can hear you.
We started to have a little bit more participation with the community, and we thank you for that part, for your support in this area. We have only one method of enforcing the existing law that's shutting off water. Anybody, you know, is seriously non-compliant. And as you're probably all well aware, that's really an uncomfortable thing for us to have to deal with, and certainly it's not comfortable for anybody that gets their water shut off. So we've been watching our wastewater collection system over the... Paying more attention to the problem, and then US EPA started to push us as well. But that was quickly an encouragement for the progress that is being made in Greece, and under the support of the CCU and GWA, and even the GWA staff has undertaken inspection and training for fog to the moment. The issue further now, we have the partial, the two thousand one percent degree, which now hiring penalties when the GWA's builds sewage out of our system. So that's going to increase the cost of operating GWA. And then the sole enforcement function that we have at this time is to shut the water off. Nobody at GWA, and I'm sure nothing to do again, I say this again, really wants that to go to that limit. Currently proposed revisions of the regulations does not change what's required in terms of compliance, but the main objective here comes from the fact that nobody wants the water shut off. Proposed revisions to the regulations are first and foremost a way to provide a ease or more encouraging for supporting GWA's worst default, and then to provide a bit of public health. Anyone jumping right into the program will of course be supported big time by GWA with training, support, whatever support we can provide. The first, which is needed, things get, things to get, we go in the right direction. We now have kind of like a tomhammer instead of a mayhem. The effecting of the new regulations is to encourage people with stronger and stronger response on our end when we don't get support. When we do have support, things are going to work a lot better, and the whole idea is to keep sources of clean, great volume in the sanitary area. Thank you.
Paul, thank you. Thank you again for the opening remarks. So the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the proposed rules. And just so for clarification, and so this is on record and the public is very clear, there are existing fats oiling, there are existing rules under our Guam Administrative Rules. So the next two presenters will discuss existing rules, the changes to the current rules, and the presentation is aimed to provide a summary for the general public and for those, you know, stakeholders who these rules will affect. So I will now recognize Ms. Vanji Luhon, our Senior Regulatory Analyst, and Mr. Vincent Leguania, who will go through a PowerPoint presentation of these rules.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Kemp, for providing some background and some information on the need for us to create this program, and I encourage the public to come to, go to our website or visit our office to look at what these changes are because we have not been able to fully implement a program until these regulations are in place. So under the current Title Twenty-Eight, which is our administrative rules, which is for public utilities, we, as our attorney had said, we do have some regulations that are in place. But as Mr. Kemp has explained, the only avenue for us to enforce it is really turning off your water. So currently, the requirements for a grease trap or grease removal devices are in our existing section twenty-one oh five. It does say that all commercial establishments must install grease traps prior to discharging into our sewer. All new applicants must locate all the, must locate all the infrastructure within the easement, but also it requires a grease trap to be installed in all commercial establishments. In our section twenty-one twenty, there's a section that does say that grease is prohibited from entering into our wastewater treatment pla, our wastewater collection system, and there's a whole full list in our, in section twenty-one twenty that describes all the substances that cannot enter. The grease trap must be approved and by our sanitary engineer, which we're changing the name, that will be our Assistant General Manager for Engineering, and that section is twenty-one twenty. The, our engineering staff does approve the type of grease removal device that you're allowed to have. And then, as we've been talking about it, the enforcement is under twenty-one twenty A, which is really all things, all enforcement for GWA is really ultimately shutting off your water. So, next slide. Our proposed changes include clarifying all the roles and responsibilities for the food establishments as well as for fog haulers. It will also establish a permit and define what inspections are going to look like and the requirements of the food establishments as well as the fog haulers. We are incorporating a very strong public outreach and education because we really want to work with the community to reduce the amount of fog into our system, and we really believe that education and voluntary compliance is really how we want to be able to reduce that, as well as our program will establish more a very robust enforcement program. It establishes a permit for all FSEs, a once-year permit is also going to be required to be renewed. As part of the permit, it will also define the sizing using the International Building Code and the International Plumbing Code, as well as EP, US EPA's Design Manual for On-Site Wastewater Disposal. As Mr. Kemp said, we're going to be using more progressive enforcement, and so it's not right away when if you don't comply with, or you don't get a good inspection, it does not mean we're going to shut off your business, the water right away. Instead, we will have progressive enforcement, and we'll go through that in a little bit. It, our new regulations will also regulate the fog haulers. Currently, we do have a permit where wastewater collect, haulers do come to our wastewater treatment plant and dispose of septic water, but not for fog. And so we will be regulating that and creating a specific permit for that. And then it defines all the public and outreach education programs that we really want to be able to do. So we are going to work with Department of Public Works for the notification of a fog permit. The fog permit process will start with them. You must obtain a permit if you're a new business or within ninety days before opening the food establishment. The permit will be required for all new FSEs and any FSEs that are being remodeled. So if you're going from a smaller space to a larger space or vice versa, you will be required to update your permit. Any kind of remodeling of the business, we want to be able to capture that. Sometimes there's a business that's established for other types of uses, and then it gets remodeled in a food establishment, it gets to be put in, we will require a FSE permit for that. Any kind of change to the ownership of the FSEs as well as the building owner. Next. Some of the program goals are really, we started this so we can comply with our federal regulations that include the Clean Water Act. We had the permit, the fog program requirement under our MPDS permit for our wastewater treatment plants, and now, as Mr. Kemp said, it's going, it's a requirement under our partial consent decree. What is different with all of these other regulations is that for every sanitary sewer overflow, we are being fined, and so it's very important for us to try to reduce that so that it does not cause us to increase the rates to the customer. The other program goal is really to reduce the fog in the sewer system. As Mr. Kemp has explained, all the sanitary sewer overflows is a health hazard. Having sewer on the streets or entering into any of our waterways has health issues for people walking through it, or even for our marine, marine life and marine resources if that sewer enters into the ocean or any rivers and streams, because ultimately we also obtain water through our aquifer, and if it seeps down the aquifer, it does, it does increase the contaminants. Ultimately, our goal is to eliminate all sanitary sewer overflows. We want to be able to improve functionality of the wastewater collection system and treatment performance by lowering the operational costs and to be able to protect the environment and the public's health. We want to provide effective guidance on the fog control devices. I know that in the past, people are putting in grease traps, and maybe they're not appropriately sized. This program will establish better controls over that as well as give better information about the appropriate size for grease traps and grease removal devices for any facility. It will also provide more guidance on maintenance for those systems. We want to be able to educate the public and businesses and fog haulers and everybody associated with contaminants into our, into our wastewater stream, how to reduce fog especially through BMPs. One of the things that, as we've been developing this program, is really building the relationship with our partners, not just with Guam PA, but public health as well, in terms of ensuring the inspections and permit requirements are in place. And so we will be establishing a outreach and education program with the food establishments, management staff, the fog haulers, and of course, the public, because we really need the public to participate. A lot of fog is also generated in residential areas, and we need to really ensure that, especially as the holidays are coming, that really it's not good to be putting fat, oil and grease down the drain. It will clog up our system and cause spills. The fog becomes hard, and so it becomes a problem for our wastewater collection as well as our wastewater treatment staff. Next slide. So who must comply? This regulation is really geared towards commercial establishments and anybody that has a food establishment, that's restaurants, cafeterias, food trucks, anyone connected to our wastewater, our wastewater system, but it's not just one connection. So if you're in a mall, all those food establishments are, this requirement, our requirements will apply to you, including home-based businesses and commercial kitchens. I know that over, after COVID, a lot of people are cooking in their home, and they are having small businesses within their home, so that will apply as well. And as I've been saying, the fog haulers will also be permitted. We really, one of the things is really working with the residents to reduce fog in their system, and we are going to do a lot of best management practices so that they, or really try to encourage them to follow best management practices so that they too can participate in reducing fog within our system. Next. Here's some of the requirements for the program itself. So as I said, all food establishments must obtain a fog control discharge permit. They must install and maintain their grease removal devices so that they're correctly sized as well as they're functioning correctly. The program requires, allows all GWA inspectors to access the grease removal device. They will be checking to see if the grease removal device is maintained and cleaned. And so we do have a twenty-five percent rule, they are, which identifies at what point cleaning must be done. Record-keeping is critical. We need to see how often your FSEs has the commercial fog haulers come and take the, remove the grease and where that grease is going, as, and then, of course, the permitted, who you use as a permitted hauler and the frequency. We want to make sure that the program is going to make sure that we are properly disposing of the grease. Currently, GWA's treatment plants do not take the grease itself, however, that is in the, we're working towards that. Right now, there are fog, there are fog haulers that are approved by Guam PA, and that they manage their grease when you take it to them, and so Guam PA is responsible for ensuring that those fog haulers are permitted, and they do the inspections for them. When the fog control program is adopted, that, we will create a full permitting process. Many of the fog, food establishments are familiar with our staff. Vince is one of them, that goes to the different establishments and inspects the, inspects the facilities and looks at the grease removal device. He has already established a database, and the database information is a requirement for, under our MPDS permit, to report that information yearly to them. As, once our proposed rules are adopted, we will be making, doing a lot in terms of educating the public about the permits and what's the requirements and the timelines on that. Next. So here are some of the requirements for the food establishments. Really, it's first, food establishments must apply for, or, and also renew their fog control discharge permit. They must install the appropriately-sized grease removal device and establish the sampling point. The devices must be cleaned regularly when solids reach twenty-five percent of capacity. We are allowed to do the inspections to make sure that it's clean. We ask the FSEs to inspect their, or to make sure that the areas around the grease removal device are kept clean and that there's a cleaning log. GWA's inspectors can review those cleaning logs. GWA's inspectors can review those cleaning logs as part of the inspection. There will be train, the FSEs are required to do some training on all the best management practices. And those, all those practices are although not necessarily extensive, it's pretty complete as to what you need to do. And it's really to help the FSEs provide longevity for their grease removal device and probably reduce some of the cleaning. So they, one of the ones that we want to make sure that all FSEs have is really signage. So that they do have BMPs posted in their establishment so that the staff, because we know, understand how staff can turn over quickly but to have visual reminders of what to do. And then as I said, all, all fog permits, including fog hauler permits, need to be renewed annually. Next. Here are some of the requirements for the fog haulers and this is all in our guide, our program documents. They need to hold a Guam PA license. The Guam PA is the one that licenses fog haulers. They need, but they still need to get a fog calling permit from GWA. They must, the fog hauler must maintain the manifest for each of the pickups. That includes the date they were picked up, the FSC that was picked, the businesses they went to, the volume and where they're disposing of it. Guam PA approves those facilities, but eventually, hopefully, in the future, GWA will be one of those places that you can. But currently, we do not do that. We want to make sure fog haulers do be best management practices as well to prevent spills. They, they are, when they pick up fog from FSEs, they must make sure that they don't, that they keep the place clean. What kind of maintenance they're doing and handling of the fog as well as handling of the records. There is an annual permit renewal and compliance, and compliance does, can do inspections on those records. One of the things is our program that we're using, Fog BMP does have training modules for both the FSEs as well as for the fog hauler operators. And so we would be encouraging them to go to those modules to ensure that they are able to get some training as well. But like something that we've done this year is we do, Vince has been able to work with the FSEs to provide formal training for the FSEs as well as for the fog haulers. Some of the best management, next. Some of the best management practices, and these are just examples for FSEs, management staff and kitchen staff is listed in the fog manual. They include wiping down the plates, using stink drainers, making sure that everything's labeled. For residential people, it's really, don't pour the grease down your drain. You should make sure that you save that and DPW does have a place where that you can give them your, your grease. It is part of the DPW Solid Waste Program and it's free to, they, they receive grease for free. The BMPs for fog haulers do include keeping the outdoor grease bins covered and away from storm drains. And for them, it also is really making sure the records are there. Next. As one of the enforcement parts, one of the things that we are doing is doing more enforcement. Really, this program expands inspections and enforcement. So all FSEs will be inspected yearly, more often if there's non-compliance and more often if there is complaints. Or if, when a, we are required under our current MPDS permit that if there's a SSO, sanitary sewer overflow in the area, our inspectors go out to all the FSEs within that, the vicinity of the spill and they must go and do an inspection on all those FSEs. If it's in a residential area, they do have to notify the residents and they do do door hangers or some kind of public outreach to, to let them know that a spill has occurred in their area and to reduce or eliminate grease going down their drains. We really want to work with the FSEs to come into compliance. Our goal is not necessarily to collect fines from them. What it is, is really wanting people to understand the importance of not putting grease in the, in the drains that will eventually get hard and become a problem for GWA. It's really to give enough information to the FSEs for them to come into compliance. As Mr. Kemp said, we're really working on progressive enforcement. Violators may be triggered by a notice of violation, there'd be maybe fines. In our enforcement component, there is a show cause order. And then only after we've really tried to work with you and if you're just completely resilient, resistant to fines and encouragement, we, well, our last resort is to turn off your water. And as Mr. Kemp has mentioned in the past, it has really affected businesses in terms of if we turn off their water, then it becomes difficult for them to operate their facility. The fines are vary from, depends on the type of violation and the list of fines and the amounts are listed in the fog manual. They include things like you don't have a permit, you falsified your records, the, you tampered with the grease removal device. The next slide shows the example of the fines and violations for the FSEs. Please go to our manual and you will see that. We really want to be able to work with you. So if, in the, what we've seen with the staff right now is really working with them to try to get businesses, food establishments in compliance. But if you, if, if you still don't want, and we'll visit you many times because we really want to try working with you. So maybe the first time or second time even, we're not issuing you a notice of violation. But if we don't see that you're making any progress towards trying to improve that, you're not communicating with us on try, on the things that we're making recommendations, we may need to issue you a notice of violation. That first notice of violation, there is no fine for that. However, if we have to issue you a second violation or a third violation and finally the fourth violation means you have no water service. There are fines associated with that and the fines are per day. Our fines are, reflect some of the comments that we receive back from USCPA and USCPA requires the fines to be daily. Next. The second fines and violations are for fog haulers. And one of the biggest things about fog haulers is if you don't have a permit or you, you're falsifying the records on your receipts or anything like that, that's a very big violation for us. Same thing, we want to be able to work with the fog haulers. The first violation is a, is just a notice of violation, the second and third are fines per day. And you can see that the fines are more significant than, a lot significant compared to the food establishments because they are making money off of the, going to these facilities. And then of course, the fourth one is really removing, is removing your permit. Next. Both the food establishments and the fog haulers have a database and that we are required to update day, yearly. GWA must maintain this fog database and track all the permits, inspections and manifests. We must report to USCPA under our MPDS, our MPDS permit. It is a requirement, they provide a list of information that we have. The list that are, we're required to, the information that we're required to report to USA EPA is part of the information that we are collecting on our permit. The data needs to be verified. The, the data is used to determine hotspots. Now, hotspots are anywhere within our wastewater collection system where we've had more than two spills in one year. And then we have to ask our wastewater collection and manager to go out and, and evaluate if that should be on a list. We have a list currently of areas that are problematic. A lot of times it's because the infrastructure is, needs to be updated, repaired or upgraded for that area. So they must prioritize it for cleaning. And so, we do have, we're required through USCPA to provide a list of the areas that have problematic, that we have multiple SSOs during the year. And so this information that we're collecting identifies those areas and puts additional attention to that. The other thing that this, we are trying to do and the information collected in the database is really trying to improve the effectiveness of the fog control program. We do have performance measures that we have agreed to with USCPA on how do we know that what we're doing is improving it? Not just in terms of how many spills, but just also outreach and education to the community is also included. Next. And so as we were talking about outreach and education, really, we would, would like residences as well as business establishments to be able to understand the importance of some of their actions and how it has impacted our system. So we will be developing fact sheets, host workshops, partner with other agencies. And we have been doing this in the past ten years. We have been able to work with Guam PA and public health, Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, some of the other food establishments to create these training opportunities with the community. So this is something that we want to be able to do more frequently. The outreach is targeted to FSEs, residents, schools and, and community groups. We really need the, our community to participate so that they can prevent fog from entering our system and preventing sanitary sewer overflows. So here's how residents can help. They really should never pour grease, cooking grease down their drains or their sinks or their toilets. I think in the past like twenty years, dishwashing liquid soap, like Dawn especially and had excellent commercials that make it seem like when you use Dawn, the grease on your, your pots and pans disappear, but it really doesn't. It just removes it from the dishes, but it goes down our drain. Grease does not disappear, it ends up either in our pipes, hopefully not in our wastewater treatment plant, but it doesn't go away. It becomes hard and it could be as hard as a boulder and that blocks our system. And blocking our system not just has spills on our streets, what it does a lot of times is it backs up and it can go into people's homes. So really, we want to prevent the public from that type of exposure to sewer. So one of the other things that residents can do is really wipe their pots and pans with paper towels and dispose of it in the trash can. Recycle oil as, as much as possible. DPW has a facility, Solid Waste does, has a facility at the DPW area and it's free. Use the sink strainers and limit garbage disposal use. Report any grease-related sewer issues to GWA promptly. Report any illegal dumping, sometimes you see, we see people dumping in our manholes, that must be reported. And then bring cooking grease to, as I keep saying, to Solid Wastes, Household Hazardous Waste Facility near DPW. Hopefully, in the future, we can do village sponsors, sponsored pickups. I know that we tried that a couple of times and it's really been successful. So we really need the public to help us to ensure that oil is collected and disposed of properly. So that is really what our program entails. If you want to be able to review that, you could go to our website. Or if you're interested in learning more about our fog program, you can also go to our website. Next. Thank you.
Benji, thank you very much for that overview.
I'm sorry, Vince, did you want to add anything? Okay, thank you, I'm, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you again to GWA's Compliance and Safety Team. Before we move on to public testimony, did operations want to offer any remarks or insight? So just for the benefit of the public, it is actually GWA's operation team, you know, who goes out there and you know, kind of handles the onsite issues that result from any clog, right? In our wastewater treatment system. So when fats, oils and grease build up, you know, in our sewer pipes, we, you know, we are required to manually appear onsite to address those issues. And you know, and, and that's one of the primary reasons for this program. And when, you know, fats, oils and grease build up and there's not as clear, you know, flow available. Of course, it takes manpower and it takes time. And so we really do require the outreach and the inspection, you know, and unfortunately, you know, I guess the, the, the penalties in some cases, you know, that this program is trying to put in place. Okay, so we'll now move on to public testimony, can I get the sign-in sheet? You know, before we move on to public testimony, we'll also, I will discuss a little bit about the economic impact. So again, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to add into our Title Twenty-Eight, Chapter Two, which is our Service Rules and regs, and we're trying to add, you know, the specific detail of everything, you know, that Ms. Luhon described. So the notice of violations, you know, definitions of a fog hauler, all of the inspection requirements. All of that detail is really going to be included in Title Twenty-Eight. So when we promulgate rules, the law requires that we also include any economic impact, right? To the general public. So if there is an economic impact that exceeds five hundred thousand dollars to the general public or to an individual, we're required to really spell that out. But in instances where the impact to the economy is below five hundred thousand dollars, what's required under law is what's called a preliminary cost impact statement. So after discussions with GWA's Compliance and Safety Team, our conclusion today is that there will be no economic impact that will individually or collectively exceed five hundred thousand dollars. For one, Ms. Luhon talked about the permits. The permits that are going to be required under this program and in our rules are not going to have any fee. It's really for us to collect and build a database, a formal database of, you know, food service establishments and fog haulers that we have registered with us. So we're able to, you know, accurately perform our investigations and our inspections, right? So the permits, there's no fee. The only fees that are associated with the implementation of these rules are the progressive fines. The fines are included in the fog program manual, which are available at Section Eight and Table Eight Point One and Eight Point Two. But you know, I realize that those are a little bit buried in all the rules that we've posted online. So after this hearing, what we're going to do is we're going to, you know, we're going to pull the, pull those out and we're going to independently put up a link for the, for the fines. So each, any interested food service establishment or fog hauler, any resident can, you know, readily view those fines and have easy access to them. So the fines are, I mean, they really range in, again, the notice of violation, if, as Ms. Luhon explained, has, there's no fine, right? It's just a notice that you're in violation with the rules that we're proposing here today. And the, the first fine really starts at a minimum of five hundred dollars, you know? And then they really, the fines go up to a maximum of five thousand dollars per violation per day. They're per day violations, so of course, they can build. Still, our estimates are that it will not exceed five hundred thousand dollars. By the time you get to, you know, the most, I guess, the maximum fine, at that point, you would have been notified, you know, at several points. So we hope that a per violation per day would really, you know, encourage of course, compliance with the rules rather than, you know, continual violations. So another thing I wanted to mention is GWA's fog, fog program currently exists. But we do this program really in conjunction with rules that are already established by other agencies. So grease removal devices are already in place and are in law as required by the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services and Guam EPA. So there are existing rules, right, that require grease control devices to be in place. So that again, because those are already in place, we do not foresee any immediate economic impact to the general public. But what the program does allow is for us to inspect, you know, those grease removal devices, for us to ensure that they're properly sized, right, with your food service establishment. devices, for us to ensure that they're properly sized, right, with your food service establishment. And, you know, that, that sizing is a benefit, not only, of course, to the food service establishment and our sanitary sewer collection, it's also a benefit to the community, right? And so now we're going to do, you know, inspections that will allow us to really help our, you know, our system and then help a food service establishment, you know, truly understand, you know, the impact and, and the levels of discharge that they have and whether that grease removal device is adequately sized again to their establishment. So again, because there are existing rules in place, we, we have not identified an economic impact that will again exceed $500,000. Yes, so the, you know, inspections and cleaning, so there will be, there's no cost, of course, for the inspection. Those costs are borne by the Guam Waterworks Authority. Cleaning costs of the food service establishment, those cleaning costs are not estimated, again, to exceed $500,000 to any individual food service establishment. The outreach costs, you know, and the education and the training, those costs are borne by GWA. They're not, you know, there's no fee for signing up, there's no fee for, you know, becoming educated and learning more about the program and the rules to the public. So again, there's no immediate economic impact. So for those reasons, a preliminary cost impact statement was provided and made available to the public along with these rules. And again, our conclusion is that there will be no economic impact to the economy or an individual or an individual business that will exceed $500,000.
Make sure, because Melissa Shive is also here and she is responsible for pre-treatment and a FOG program is part of a pre-treatment program. And did you have anything you wanted to add to this? Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you again to Vanji, Paul and the GWA Compliance and Safety Team. And we also thank, of course, our GWA Wastewater Treatment and Wastewater Collection Operations Team for being here. So now we'll move on to public testimony and just some housekeeping rules. So any members of the public here today and who are testifying, we just ask, you know, that you state your name for the record and that first you be recognized before speaking. We also ask, you know, that you state the organization or entity you represent, if any. You know, you're able to read any written testimony that you have available into the record or you can even submit testimony. You can submit testimony without speaking. I do notice that our, there are some members of the public here, but I will state for the record that there have been no individuals who have signed up to provide any testimony at this time. So if there are no individuals who are going to provide testimony, I will say for the general public that we will continue to accept any written testimony via email up to December 1st, 2025, and that's 14 calendar days after this hearing has concluded. And the written testimony can be sent to our email address at... It can be sent via email to fogproject@guamwaterworks.org. Okay? And so that information is available on the website. Again, the email address is fogproject@guamwaterworks.org. We will continue to accept written public testimony up until that time. And I, before we conclude, I just want to confirm, did we do a check of the lobby? Okay, so what we're going to do is, because we're on the third floor of the Fadiyan Building in Mangilao and the public really only has general access to our customer service division, we're just going to take a short recess. We're going to confirm that nobody is downstairs on the first floor who's waiting with the guard or otherwise, and then we'll resume the hearing after that. So just a short recess. Okay, thank you everyone. We're resuming the FOG hearing after a short recess. We've done a check of the first floor Fadiyan Customer Service Lobby and there are no members of the public here available who will provide testimony. So the last item on our agenda really is just closing remarks and adjournment. So before we close, I do want to thank everyone who came out today to share their views and their expertise. We also like to thank, you know, the Compliance and Safety Team for all of the hard work that they've put into the creation of this program and the rules. And our Compliance Safety Team, for the record, did work very closely with the United States EPA Office in order to sure that, in order to ensure that these rules also comply with federal guidelines. You know, everyone's input plays a vital role in shaping the program that will protect our wastewater system. And, you know, the program again is intended to be fair and practical, right, for business and residents that it affects. So again, the public comment period will remain open until December 1st, which is 14 days after today's hearing. And written comments can be sent to fogproject@guamwaterworks.org and we'll, we'll post that there. Okay, so the public should be able to view that email address now. And it does say right there, fogproject@guamwaterworks.org. We do anticipate that public testimony will be received. That testimony will be reviewed and of course will be considered before transmission to the Guam Legislature. So again, this is a, a public hearing that is required in order for GWA to adopt rules into its Title 28, Chapter 20, Chapter 2. So after this hearing, what's next is we will collect and compile any written public testimony that's been provided. We will consider whether or not, you know, any changes or modifications or corrections to the rules are required to be made. And after that is done, we will send a complete package of the identical rules that we have published and provided and a copy of this hearing, which is also being transcribed by a court reporter. We'll send a copy of this hearing, a recording and a written transcript, both to the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of the Governor. The rules require that we send the complete package of our rulemaking process to the Office of the Attorney General. So the Attorney General can confer and confirm that all of the requirements in the Administrative Adjudication Act have been followed. The Office of the Governor under statute is required to ensure that the implementation of this, of these rules subscribe and align with public policy. And after we receive clearance from both the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of the Governor, we will then forward a complete package of these rules to the Guam Legislature. The Administrative Adjudication Act requires that we send copies of the rules to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, the Legislative Secretary and our Oversight Chair. So we will be sending it to those three specific individuals. And the Legislature will have 90 days to review the rules, the testimony provided today, I mean, any testimony that may be provided, the hearing today. And they will have up to 75 days to decide whether or not they want to conduct their own public hearing. If there is no public hearing within 75 days, they have 90 days to act. And if there's no action, by default under law, the rules will be adopted by the Speaker of the Guam Legislature and adopted through default with the Legislative Secretary. So that's the process and the next couple steps. So GWA is tracking and is really required under the partial consent decree to have these rules adopted by early February 2026. So there is a timeline for the general public, so they are aware. So food service establishments are aware, FOG haulers, and of course, all of our ratepayers are aware when these rules are planned to come into effect. Again, that's early February 2026. So from there, I have no additional comments. Okay? And if there are no questions or remarks from anyone else, I think we can adjourn today's public hearing. So the time is now 11:04 a.m. And so we are going to move to adjourn, so this hearing is hereby adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.